So Lisa won't be with us this evening. Do we have everybody else?
I believe so.
Give it another minute. All right, six thirty. You ready? All right, Kyle, we all set for broadcast?
Yeah.
Good to go. All right, welcome, everybody, to our remote planning board meeting this Wednesday, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty. First item on our agenda is a roll call, and tonight we have Krista Swinser, we have Dave Thompson, myself, Phil Rock, we've got Judd McIntosh, John Beckett, and also Mike Costello. Can I, oh, next up is acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that, please? Don't be shy. Need to unmute.
I I move that we accept the agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Krista. Any discussion, the only comment we have, and Kyle will address this, is we might be tabling number four under old business. But if we're okay as presented, we can discuss that later. But any further discussion? Jessica, you're up, please.
For the approval of the agenda, Krista Swinser.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
John Beckett.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Can you find the mute, Dave?
Approve.
Very good. Thank you, Dave.
Phil Rock.
Approved.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
At six four with one absent.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. Next up is approval of the minutes of our November eighteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I move we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Very good. I did not get a chance to review these thoroughly, but I am sure most of you did. So any comments on the the very thorough minutes provided by Jessica again?
I think they're fine.
Wonderful. Wow, Jessica, this is a good one. Any further comment? Very good, with no changes. Jessica, you're up again.
Krista Swinser.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
John Beckett.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approve.
Phil Rock.
Approved.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
That's six four.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up, under old business, we have a continued discussion, a review of the planning board's bylaws. I spoke with Kyle earlier, and we were not anticipating a meeting. So there was really minimal effort. Or Kyle, I don't know if you had any time to revise what we had discussed the last time. So if you could confirm that, but I think we're going to table this until our next meeting.
Right. Yeah, I didn't have a chance to do what we had talked about last time as a, you know, it's kind of late in the month that, you know, we really formalized having this meeting. So I was hoping that we could table that discussion to the next meeting as it's not a incredibly urgent matter.
Right. Any issues with that?
No.
Can we just continue to table this, or do we need, I don't, I don't think we need.
Yeah, there's no public hearing, or I don't think vote needed for that.
Thank you, Kyle. So our next meeting, we'll hear about that. Next up, new business, we have two items this evening. First up is an amended subdivision by Deer Go Pines Development Company LLC to request an extension of the expiration of approval for phase two of the final subdivision plan that was approved in two thousand and fifteen. Subdivision is located at tax map thirty-one dash three, lot twenty-nine dash B in the medium density residential district. Do we have a representative from that project that can?
Yeah, they're attending. Bill, would you be able to elevate, I think, Brian Story and David Woodward, who are both in the?
Sure.
attendees list? And then I know of those two, they can confirm if there's anyone else.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Could you provide a summary of what you're proposing for us this evening?
Sure. First of all, my name is Brian Story, Vice President of Operations for Grace Management. I also represent CPF, the Ownership Group, and Deer Go Pines Development Company. And a quick thank you to the board for the consideration this evening. We appreciate the addition to the agenda. In summary, our request is an extension of the existing approval for the phase two development, the subdivision development. Over the course of the initial five-year period, we were able to complete the phase one, and as of today, phase two remains open and incomplete. And so we have resubmitted and request board consideration for the extension of that that approval.
Thank you. In addition, we also have a summary from Kyle that he prepared just to remind the board on what was approved back one, back when, and then some some other matters that we can think about this evening and discuss. Kyle, could you go over your summary, please?
Sure. So I kind of tried to outline the history of what was approved previously, and, you know, twenty fifteen was the final approval for phase two, which was the extension of Chestnut Court. And normally, with a subdivision approval, there's a, the ordinance gives a two-year timeframe after approval to complete infrastructure improvements. That's what our subdivision ordinance, you know, states as the the timeframe for that. There is an extension process that can be followed. That's usually dealt with between the applicant or property owner and the town manager. In twenty fifteen, however, I believe the applicant had requested upfront a five-year window to complete those infrastructure improvements. And I think after some discussion at the board, looking at the minutes, it looked like it wasn't, you know, there was some differing opinions there. But at the end, that five-year window was approved, which went until, you know, January of twenty twenty-one, which is why we're here. So beyond that, beyond the initial two-year window that the ordinance states and the extension process through the town manager, there's not a whole lot that said about extending the timeframe to complete improvements with a subdivision. That being said, there is a waiver that the planning board can utilize with subdivisions written into the ordinance that I know was brought up at that meeting in twenty fifteen. It was referenced in the the planning board report from back then. And so I can just read that quickly, you know, it says where the planning board finds that extraordinary and unnecessary hardship may result from strict compliance with this land use ordinance, or where there are special circumstances of a particular plan, it may waive any of the regulations of Article seven, which is the subdivision ordinance, provided that such waiver will not have the effect of nullifying the purpose of this land use ordinance, the comprehensive plan, or any other ordinance. In granting any waiver, the planning board shall require such conditions as well in its judgment secure substantially the objectives of the requirements so waived. So really, what I think that speaks to is the board, you know, when we look at site plan review, the board can only waive certain application items, you know, if a project doesn't have anything to do with lighting, then, you know, the applicant doesn't have to provide that information. But with subdivision, it's a little, seems a little more broad. And the board has some, seems like more gray area to determine. You know, they can waive something on the basis of it, you know, not kind of discrediting or nullifying other things in the ordinance. And the fact that this plan remains unchanged by the applicant, it's still, they want to pursue and just extend the plan that was already approved, and that approved plan from twenty fifteen still meets all of the current ordinance requirements, I think is a key thing to consider. It's not a situation where the densities changed and, you know, they were allowed a certain number of units under the old standards, but now they're allowed something different. You know, if that was the case, the applicant would have to bring their plan up to meet the current standards. But as the ordinance standards haven't really changed in any way that would impact this project, you know, I think the board should, you know, consider, you know, that's the intent of the ordinance and, you know, what extending the approval would actually do. I did speak with the town attorney about this, just because it's not something that comes up all that often. He did, you know, seem to agree when we were talking that, you know, the applicant requested of another five-year extension in their application this time. But there's nothing that really speaks to that five-year mark in the ordinance. So if the board was looking to approve some sort of extension, that it might be more reasonable to do something like a two-year extension, which can be tied to what's stated in the subdivision ordinance, when any subdivision is approved as the timeframe to complete infrastructure improvements. And then if the applicant, after those two years, still hadn't completed the infrastructure improvements, they would need to come back to the board to, again, show reasoning as to why they were unable to complete those improvements. And kind of would have to go through this process again. But the goal of that would be to kind of limit the window in which any application would be grandfathered under old standards. You know, the, I guess, the danger or the potential negative impact of the board approving a longer extension is that, you know, soon after it's approved, the ordinance changes in some way that would impact the app, you know, the development, the project. But then, because the applicant was already given that longer extension, they would essentially be grandfathered, and they could avoid those ordinance changes until their approval ran out. So that I think that would be another thing that the board should consider. But yeah, that pretty much summarizes it. The applicant provided some reasoning in their application. I don't know if they want to speak more to that as to, you know, why more progress hasn't been made.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I was going to ask that question. So if you could address that, I know, just to board members, there was a letter from Grace Management in in our packet. So if you could summarize that for us, please?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity, and Kyle, thanks for the summary and the work behind the scenes and the and the history here. Absolutely. You know, majority of our focus has been on completing the undeveloped portion of phase one that was, we acquired with the acquisition of Deer Go Pines. And really, we've been successful in doing this elsewhere, also in Maine, when we have really critical local development partnerships. And one of the major headwinds for us was a reliable local development partnership in which we have secured now going forward. And so that in combination with the the change in the demand that we're seeing right now, for for us, demand is, you know, the summary of an equation, right? Demand is, you know, being able to satisfy the existing resale and meet new demand on top of the existing resale demand. And there's two things that are happening for us right now, for the market in general, right now, that that's starting to satisfy that. One, we're seeing a decreased time on the market for the in-place inventory, the current homes for sale. And we're seeing a buyer that's shifting their, that's shifting their their priority away from the multi-unit retirement type for independent living and and is desiring to be part of a community, but to live so in an independent, single-family dwelling. So that in combination with a little bit of post-COVID latent demand, we we see a little bit clearer of a runway here to for the second phase of development.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, but before I am going to open up that hearing, are there questions from from the board to the applicant or Kyle? So I guess I'll start. I see units being built. There's some closer to Kelly Road, which seemed to be the completion of the the phase, some of the phase one, you know, units that were proposed. Do you have any idea? Again, we're going to consider timelines today and perhaps receive public input, but any idea, looking out, you've asked for five years, but do you expect to have continued construction of phase two units in just the next two years?
Thank you, Phil Rock. The, right now, our focus, and you are correct, that last and most recent Kelly Road duplex is complete and and has transacted, which means we have just a few remaining phase one units to complete on a center island portion. At that point, you know, in that, what's called a twelve-month timeline, if our current development thesis holds, we will certainly see the need to begin the the infrastructure for that, for that second phase.
So Kyle, question for you. So if in the next two years, they begin any of phase two, and just so I understand this, because they're completing phase one units now, which we approved a long time ago. So I guess, for consideration by the board, if if they started any of the construction on phase two over the next two years, would that satisfy our requirements so they would not need to come back for an extension?
So it should be noted that the, as far as completing the improvement, it's not the the structures themselves. It would be, you know, the utilities and, you know, the extension of, you know, the road and things like that. So the the actual structures would be building permits obtained through the.
The infrastructure and getting the roads done. So if they, if they worked on that, completed that, we'd be fine.
Right. Yeah, I think the the language in the ordinance talks about that being commenced and substantially completed in the in the two years. So it's, it's not even necessarily that it has to be fully finished in the two years, just it has to meet that substantially complete definition in the ordinance.
Very good. Other questions from the board before I open up the public hearing? Seeing none. The wet pen on my desk. A public hearing is open. Jessica, do we have any people that want to weigh in this evening?
No, there's no one leaving comments.
Okay, I'm going to leave the public hearing open and just discussion from the the board. I, when I read Kyle's summary and comments from our town attorney, I think we have been fairly lenient with it with this project, you know, five years, and whether we go another five or a shorter time period, you know, two seem to be the the standard in our ordinance. But it almost seemed reasonable to me, as Kyle said, the ordinance has have not been changed, but there there could be changes. We've allowed seven years of, or potentially seven years of extensions here. So I guess my question to you, whether you think that's reasonable, and it may be at this time a better course to just request, you know, two-year visits if if they cannot substantially complete the items that Kyle just just mentioned in time. What are your thoughts on that this evening?
I think that.
Oh, Judd, you're up.
Okay. I I think that it's the two-year is reasonable. There have been a lot of events that have happened over the last decade. So, yeah, I mean, I think that the two-year extension is reasonable. There's no sense in them going through the process again, since they wouldn't have to change anything. And it sounds like as long as they get going, I think the only concern would be is if, because based on what you said, Brian, it sounded like you probably wouldn't start this phase two for twelve months. So as you're wrapping up phase one, which might take another eight, ten months, you wouldn't start for another year?
Yeah, that that's correct. And then that's, you know, a rough timeline, you know, obviously, right now, the crystal balls are a little foggy with things being day-to-day, but that that would be the case. We would, we would prioritize just those last few structures and then look to start the infrastructure of phase two.
What happens, Kyle, if they're not substantially complete? So we're, you know, twenty months into this, and they're thirty percent complete, forty percent complete. I guess at that point, they've started. We think they're going to finish. We would just grant them another extension for two years. Is that what is likely to occur if nothing's changed in the ordinance?
Correct. Yeah, I would probably just need to come back for another extension, and the board could make a similar decision.
I feel like the two years is is reasonable and appropriate.
Thank you, Judd. Dave, I'm going to go around the horn. Could you weigh in, please?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that we've already given them seven years, two years, more than nine years.
Just to clarify, sorry, we've given them the five-year extension. That's expiring. So now I would just, I was adding the two years if we allow this next extension. So that would be seven. So I just want to clarify on seven, not nine. But we would have given them, if we grant a two-year extension now, seven years.
Well, I guess due to the uncircum, circumstances are really questionable right now. And I think that the town might want to make some ordinance changes, who knows, with trying to react to the COVID nineteen. And I think if we give them an extension, we're not going to be able to hold them to the, they'll be grandfathered for two years. So I'm, I, I think that we need to deny the extension, and they can come back to the board if they want to start up. And then they'll start with two years fresh whenever they want to start.
So just to clarify, then, thank you for that, Dave. But in Kyle's summary for us, if we denied the extension now, that the previous extension would expire end of December this year, so that if they wanted to start phase two, they would have to come back with a brand-new application for starting from scratch. Is that what you intended, Dave? I just want to be clear.
Because from reading what Kyle said, I understood that, yes, they got to come back and start over. But the the information in in drawings and the engineering work is done.
Yep.
So it's not like you're starting from square one. You're starting from square ten.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Krista, what do you think? Need you to unmute, please? Still muted that I can see. There you go.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No, no, quite all right. It's the times we're in.
Okay. I think the two-year extension is is the way to to go at this point. And if, you know, we come up against another extension, maybe that's the time to say, okay, we're going to start over.
Okay, thank you, Krista. Mike, what do you think?
I was going over the minutes of the original meeting, and it was a, the approval of this plan was done before I was even on the board. So, and I approved the extension at that time, based on the commitment from the previous boards. So my personal feeling is two years should be enough right now. Otherwise, we're going through too many boards to keep this project going.
Thank you, Mike. John, what what do you think?
I think two years is adequate to give them some time to get moving.
All right, I'll weigh in as well. I, when I read the summary, we have an opinion from from the attorney. And if two years is our standard practice, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the applicant to come in. This, this is not a great time commitment in another two-year period. Let's let's hope that the economy allow, and the conditions allow for you to proceed with phase two and substantially complete that. I I do not believe it's necessary at this time for them to start from from scratch at this point. Krista's comment, if we, you know, come up against this again, and it continues down that that path, you know, we may have a discussion, as Dave said, deny the the request for an extension. But I I support the the two-year option. I think we've given them seven years. Again, if they have to come back before us in two, I don't think that's unreasonable for a request. So that that is my opinion. So we've addressed that. Jessica, any comments from the the public? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Other comments from from the board on this? That that was all all I had is just.
I have one comment, Phil. And that is that we are setting a precedent. We talked about setting precedent setting in the prior. And now we're even even going further and setting a precedent that you can come back for another extent for extension.
Yeah.
I I I guess I would agree with whoever agreed before that we are setting a precedent, and we we need to really think about it.
Kyle, could you address that? Because I, you had some language in the summary, and I think people have read that. But it just, again, I want to be careful, because Dave, Dave's correct, you know, I like to be consistent as a board. I don't always want to be moving goalposts here, but could you provide some opinion on that?
Sure. So I think that, I mean, first, as far as, you know, ordinance changes that could potentially impact this, I I don't think there are too many. I think it's unlikely that the town creates some standard or some amendment to the ordinance that would change whether or not the project as it is, is approved. Certainly, nothing right now that's being discussed at a policy level would have that sort of implication. But yeah, as far as the the idea of that that waiver in Article three of the land use ordinance, you know, I I think it pretty clearly states that, you know, if the board finds that there has been a valid reason that it can waive a waive a requirement from the subdivision ordinance. And the legal opinion in twenty fifteen, when I think Roger had just become the town attorney, was that that could apply to procedural things within the subdivision ordinance. You know, but it's really all on the basis of intent. You know, the board can't waive something for an applicant that would basically be a loophole for the applicant to get around some other ordinance requirement. But in this case, I I don't believe that that's what the board would be doing by making a waiver or granting a waiver or an exception. But in this case, I I don't believe that that's what the board would be doing by making a waiver or granting a waiver or an exception. Because if the applicant were to come forward with this plan, it would still be approved today. Except, you know, I think the the one thing to consider, another thing to consider from the board is that the applicant may be able to come forward and reapply with a lot of the same materials. But the the application fees and things like that would all be new. So if you're looking at it from a purely intent standpoint, you know, both situations sort of get you to the same thing, whether the extension is given or whether the applicant applies from the beginning of the process. They both get you to the the same plan that was already approved. So in that case, I I guess the ordinance in that waiver section would say that gives the board the authority to to make that exception because nothing is really changing outside of what the normal process is.
Thank you, Kyle. So we we've had some good discussion on this. The the applicant has provided some justification for this. Do we have any other questions? For the applicant, public hearing is closed, so. All right, if there's no other questions, we we do have proposed findings of fact for this project that Kyle prepared for us. And again, this is for consideration. So I'm gonna read these into the record. We'll go through each of the the two items that Kyle identified and and we can discuss it further. Vote on these. So these are the proposed findings of fact for Deer Gopines Development Company LLC. An amendment to the subdivision review expiration of approval extension dated December 16, 2020. Pursuant to Article seven, section 18 dash two 10, subdivision review in section 18 dash 82 subsection A waivers of the Orno Code of Ordinances. The Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Deer Gopines Development Company LLC. CPF Senior Living Deer Gopines LLC and CPF Cottage's Property Company LLC to extend its expiration of approval for completing infrastructure improvements approved as part of the final phase two subdivision plan. Originally approved November 18, 2015, the development is located in the medium density residential district off Main Street and Kelly Road. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments and the public, the planning board board has found the following. Number one, expiration of approval, that extending the expiration of approval to complete infrastructure improvements as part of the phase two final subdivision plan originally approved November 18, 2015, does not nullify the purpose of the land use ordinance as the project approved on November 18, 2015, still meets the current requirements and standards of the ordinance. Also, that the applicant has presented substantial reasons as to why the infrastructure improvements have not been completed in the original five year timeframe that was approved, such as market demand, contractor availability and COVID-based buyer suspensions. Comment on that. All right, moving on, other findings, that all other findings of the planning board with respect to this development at its meeting of November 18, 2015, and all conditions of approval and requirements pertaining thereto are unchanged and remain in place. Are there any issues with that? Very good. That's written the record. I think we are ready for a motion.
I move that we extend the expiration of approval for completing the infrastructure improvements that were previously approved as part of the final phase two subdivision plan on November 18, 2015. For the Deer Gopines Development Company LLC, CPF Senior Living Deer Gopines LLC and CPF Cottage Cottage's Prop Company, Property Company LLC at the intersection of Keller Road and Main Street tax map and lot 031-003-029-B with two recommendations. The first is that any in any and all conditions of the approval from November 18, 2015, phase two subdivision approval continue to apply. And secondly, that the extension to complete the improvements is granted for just two years. And that if the applicant does not commence and substantially complete the improvements within that time, that they would have to come back before the planning board for consideration of any additional extension.
Thank you, Judd. Can I have a second on that?
So again.
Thank you, John. Further discussion? Jessica, could you read the role?
For approval of Deer Gopines proposal, Krista Schwensner.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
John Beckett. Dave Thompson.
Disapprove.
Phil Rock.
I approve.
Doug McIntosh.
Approve.
That's five, four with one against.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. Very good. We are moving on to the next item on our agenda, and that is a minor site plan review by regional school unit 26 to construct an accessory storage garage at garage at tax map 27 seven dash zero lot 12 in the medium density residential district. Do we have a representative of that proposal?
Yeah.
You do. I'm working on promoting.
Yeah, it'd be Brent, Meredith and Robin.
Unpromote and then promote. Oops. Let me try again.
Handing out power to everyone.
Yeah. Okay, I think I've got everybody in the right place.
Can you promote Robin as well? Robin Tannenbaum.
Are we waiting for more? Are we okay?
I think we're good now.
Could I have a representative for the applicant describe what we'll be reviewing this evening?
Hi, I'll start. I this is Meredith Higgins, Superintendent for R226. We were lucky enough to receive some relief funds from the state for the current situation we're under, trying to start schools with other conditions with pandemic education that we're inventing. And one of the projects that we wanted to accomplish with these was to extend outdoor learning, which we were able to do and continue to be able to do. But one of our challenges with that is is kind of a place to put all of these new acquisitions. And so we came up with the idea of building this storage building and needed town approval to proceed with that. So we worked with Kyle and Kyle kind of walked us through what our options were because one of the biggest challenges, as I know Kyle has mentioned to you, is the timeline for this project. Because the the funds have to be spent by December 30. So and we didn't receive them until October. I think we received them October 5th or and we had to have our plan in by October 15. So it was a really tight turnaround. And so we needed to start construction really before we could get the site plan to the planning board. And so the town worked with us on a process to get a conditional building permit. We worked with our architect, CHA, Robin Tannenbaum's on the call. CHA is the, you may recall that the group were using our construction project. They helped us work on getting materials together for a site plan adjustment update to reflect this. And so that's where we are. We we did receive the conditional building permit. And the project is well underway. Brent can probably comment on how far the project is. At this point, it's nearing completion. So I really would turn over anything else to Brent and Robin in terms of questions, but that's the kind of the frame of why we come to you tonight.
Thank you. Robin or Brian?
Hi, this well, I'll I'll go. This is Robin Tannenbaum from, and I'll actually turn this on, but let me see if I can hidden upstairs in my home. Just wanted to say hello. You guys saw us about a year and a half ago when we came before you for a planning board approval for the large construction project. The district had this great opportunity. I mean, it's it's one of the funny things that's come out of this whole situation is funding available to try to keep education going as smoothly as possible. And they've done a great job being creative about it. And then, but one of the consequences is needing this storage space. So I'm really here to answer questions. I saw Kyle's memo to you all, which I think was very thorough. The structure is, I believe, in place. The site work is in place. Brent, who is our facilities director, can speak to the fact that I believe the slab still needs to be poured. But again, the work has to be completed by December 30. So mainly, we appreciated Kyle working with us to to do this sort of unusual situation. We understand it is not business as usual. As is the case these days.
Thank you, Robin. She had mentioned, Kyle, you did prepare us another nice summary. Do you have anything to add to to what we just heard?
Sure, I would just add that the the reason that this is coming before the board is that it's considered an accessory structure. The primary use, the school being in institutional use or ordinance requires that all accessory structures and uses to institutional uses come before the planning board for review. So that's kind of the reason it was here. I would add that there were kind of a few steps that we went through when deciding on the conditional building permit option. You know, this does, you know, Dave, in the last conversation was talking about a precedent. You know, issuing conditional building permits is potentially a dangerous precedent that could be set by the planning board. So we felt that there had to be some steps taken before we did that. Especially with a a project that involved an actual construction and it wasn't just a home business or food truck or something like that that could easily be kind of gotten rid of. But so we made sure there's a thorough staff review. The kind of level of planning board staff feedback that we would normally attain was done before issuing the conditional building permit. I talked with the town manager as well as Phil beforehand to kind of go over everything to make sure that, you know, as many reservations were kind of eased as possible. And finally, you know, we considered that there was already an existing structure there. And I don't know if anyone on the applicant side wants to speak to that. But that it wasn't, you know, sort of displacing, you know, a completely natural area that it was more of an upgrade over something that was existing. So when we took all that in combination, it seemed like the conditional building permit was a good idea or a feasible idea and that, you know, staff didn't really see any issues with it as it's fairly centrally located on a large lot. So the potential impact to a Butters would be fairly minimal. But other than that, I think everything else was pretty much talked about.
Thank you, Kyle. I I do want to add to that Dave's Dave's comments from before are again, something I mentioned the last time that these are are unique times. Robin just said that as well. And we do not want this to become business as usual, but for this particular project. And given the available availability of funding, based on my conversation with Kyle and and what we talked about, I I was okay with that conditional approval. But again, this is not something I I told you folks last time that that I agree with. But we've had a few examples. Kyle mentioned the the food trucks and now this project that again, I think just because of the the times we're in, we we proceeded. And now we now we get to review them. So again, we we do need to be careful. Dave's Dave's comment was was taken to heart. And we need to be careful moving forward, but we need to review this project that was just described to us. So this is a a public hearing. But I'm going to get questions from the board to the applicants before we we open up that hearing.
I have a question.
Yes.
Were any trees cut to make room for this building?
There was, there was one tree that was removed.
Was it a white birch?
It was.
Well, there were two white birches planted there by the tree board a number of years ago. There were trees that we got from the Dutton Nursery, were probably worth four, $500 apiece. So it says it's too bad one of them had to go. All right, you know, I'm on the I'm on the tree board committee. And you may remember, we had to deal with the retention fund, which we were very happy with.
Yes.
So I guess we'll have to overlook this. I I'm disappointed. We we went, the tree board members went down with their own vehicles and hauled these trees up. We hauled like 70 trees up and planted them ourselves. That's all.
Thank you, Dave. Was was this taken under consideration, Kyle? Because again, these types of issues, there should be enough communication to to kind of address those during the discussion. But was that brought up during your your conversations? I I was not aware of that.
It wasn't specifically brought up, no, but I don't think that in the staff review, it wasn't brought out by any of the staff.
We we came up with a compromise the the last time. We moved the pawn. There was quite a bit of discussion for the the learning for us. I'm just trying to remember the exact term, Dave. But so we were able to to work around that before, come up with an alternative. So Dave has mentioned a concern. Is there a possibility that that there could be a replacement of those trees? That that was a big deal. And again, Dave's on, I think, every committee in the town. And I I agree with his his concern there that that's unfortunate. But it'd be awful nice if if that could be rectified. Is that a possibility?
Yes, that is something that we can definitely look into in the springtime. One still remains. One one needed to be removed due to the footprint of the of the foundation. But one is still there from when they planted them originally.
Okay, you you have heard the concern from a
Yes, absolutely. And we'll look at replacing that.
Yeah, I think I think that's something that this board can consider as a condition. Thank you, Dave. Other comments from the board?
So do we think then that COVID protects us from this being a precedent? You know, the difference, yeah, I mean, I I just want to make sure. I mean, this is what it is. I get it. I just want to make sure that because all the other ones, like you said, were things that could have been revoked quite easily. You know, this one. Once someone builds a building, it's tough to say, oh, no, tear it down. That's probably going to be worse than so. Because it's not going to affect the planning board as much as it is now. Someone's going to come into the town and be like, hey, you did this for them, Kyle, do it for me, right? And so what's our response going to be? You know, the town's response is going to be when someone comes in and says, you know, I want to build the structure and I need to do it now because there's some other, you know, constraint or money issue. You know, I I don't even know, can we have, because the school is kind of a common good, right? It's it's a community good, a common good. So maybe that kind of sets a precedent too, or I don't know.
Kyle, can you?
Yeah. So I mean, I think we did sort of look at those variety of factors and determining it and that we don't want to be in a position where any applicant for any development project can simply, you know, it's nearing winter and the end of construction season and they just want a conditional building permit so they can get a head start. I mean, that's not something I think that anyone within the town staff was looking for. You know, I don't know if there is any specific thing that, you know, says, you know, we did it for this project and not for the other ones. I think it's the communication between all of the parties. You know, me working with other staff, me working with the chair of the board to beforehand, before issuing the building permit to see if it's a reasonable option to explore. But I think it was very, I mean, COVID obviously being the biggest factor. I know that different departments, the community development department has worked with different businesses and, you know, through planning board, we've done a little as well as far as some extra circumstances. So I think that was the primary thing. So I think when you take that piece of it away, that removes a huge piece of, you know, whether the planning board would consider doing something like this.
I'm curious, did our town attorney weigh in on this?
Not specifically this one. But again, I think there have been other instances where the town has kind of made some exceptions under kind of pandemic times. So I think it's a practice in certain circumstances, each reviewed on, under their own unique kind of lens. That's been ongoing throughout this year. Yeah. So I, I would, I mean, I would just say that it's a decision that comes down to the board at the end of the day, and I think that communication, I mean, Phil had, you had your reservations, you know, when we were talking about it. So I think it would be really that part of the, the conversation and dealing with other staff and really kind of getting at the heart of why the conditional building permit was issued. Was it, you know, valid reasoning? You know, or was it merely just a way to kind of get around some procedural step in the ordinance?
I mean, I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we don't approve this, you know, they've met the ordinance. We gave them the tentative approval. I don't think it'd be in good faith to, to not approve this. So I'm not suggesting that. I just, you know, if we could somehow tie it to, oh, well, it's our public school system. So that's why you could get this pre-approval or something that was more, but anyways, it is what it is. So.
I, I wonder, is there some language we could insert in our approval that just says, this is an exception to our usual procedures because of the COVID pandemic. And that hopefully will not be a repeating event so that it would preclude that being applied to other things.
I think that's a great idea, Krista, and I was trying to figure out how this board can protect ourselves because I don't like going out on that limb. This was a unique case. I did express my concerns. I mentioned it at the last meeting. Dave has commented, Judd's commented. So I mean, it's clear that we do not want to go down this road unless, you know, again, extenuating circumstances. I think we're in that type of a situation now, but we need to, I guess, protect our decision. So I think that's a great idea. Judd, would that be sufficient if, if as part of our either conditions of approval, we will be discussing proposed findings of fact and perhaps we can also, you know, add it in there. So it's in the record. Somehow, does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
All right. Krista, did you have anything else to add?
No.
Mike, what do you think?
I was going to actually speak to what Krista did. If there's a way that we could sort of like put an asterisk on this ruling and cover ourselves. Also, something else to consider is maybe we replace that tree or maybe a couple of the trees. It could even be a student project next spring.
Again, the concerns were raised during the earlier parts of the school approval and I think it's reasonable. I mean, we, this board is, is put our neck out there a little bit and I think that's again, probably a reasonable compromise to either replace or add to what was, was removed within reason, of course. Thank you, Mike. Any, any other comments?
I agree with Krista's comments.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anything else, Dad?
That's it.
Discussions on the project and the, the design plans were submitted as part of the, the project. This, the structure is a little bit larger. I mean, what, Robin, I'm going to throw that at you. Is it like, you know, two and a half times larger than the other facility?
Forgive me, I'm actually going to ask Brent to clarify because he's more familiar. I know the new one is 24 by 36, like 860 square feet.
Yeah.
Brent?
So, so the original one was 24 feet wide. It was probably, it's probably 24 by 20 maybe. So.
So a little, a little bit bigger, but.
Yes.
Okay. So that, that was part of the discussion. Board members that, you know, I was just looking at the size. There's always been a structure there, didn't meet the needs, you know, they had the opportunity to seize this, this grant funding. And, you know, more or less a de minimis impact in my opinion at that time to move forward. So I just wanted to be clear that the dimensions are in our packet, but I wanted you to be aware of that. Stormwater doesn't appear to be an issue. Some of the things pretty simple are, you know, town engineer, everybody's weighed in on this. But that, that's the physical description. Any other comments, issues with the building, the design, anything else to add other than perhaps the, the tree issue we've, we've discussed?
I would just make the comment that the tree board will probably write a letter addressing the replacement of the tree and what we would like to see.
Okay. So I'm just thinking of conditions of approval now moving forward for consideration, but Dave, obviously, you know, with a tree board, so we can, we can perhaps just refer to in consultation with the tree board, something along those lines and put a condition on that. Hope the applicant would be willing to participate in that discussion. I mean, Dave, Dave's our, our go-to here. So I mean, I think working with them to come up with something, is that reasonable applicants?
Yes, I would be glad to work with, with Mr. Thompson.
Great. Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Well, okay, we haven't even opened up the public hearing yet. So before we get too far along. Jessica, anybody in line? Okay, I'm going to leave it open for a few minutes. If anybody's stuck with us this long, you know, maybe they'll have something to say. Further comments from the board? All right, nothing, Jessica? All right, that's abbreviated public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. And we do have before us, Kyle provided us proposed findings of fact to consider. And again, be thinking about either the language that we need to put in here regarding the COVID concerns and why we have taken this approach this evening, but just be considering what the language should be because I don't have that right at the moment. So these are the proposed findings of fact for RSU 26 site plan review dated December 16th, 2020. Pursuant to Article 6, Section 18-177. Of the Orno Code of Ordinances, the Orno Planning Board has considered the application of RSU 26 for a minor site plan for the construction of an accessory storage garage located at tax map 27-0 lot 12 in the medium density residential district. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments and the public found the following. Number one, requirements of the district that the proposed project is allowable in the MDR district and that the proposal complies with the applicable dimensional requirements of the district. Any issues there? Number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes that the proposed accessory structure meets the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of 18, chapter 18 land use ordinance. Any issues there? Number three, utilization of the site that this construction is within the natural capabilities of the site and is located in a suitable area of the site. Are there issues or concerns there? Number four, traffic and pedestrian access that the added accessory structure will not generate any additional traffic to the site and require no access by the public. Are there any issues there? Number five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. Comments? Six, stormwater management, that any stormwater management, any stormwater will be managed properly. Concerns there? Seven, erosion control, that the project will take proper erosion control measures. And again, this is ongoing construction. So with our discussion, I would like the applicant to nod your head and tell me that all appropriate erosion control has been ongoing during this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good. All right. Any, any concerns from the board? Number eight, water supply and sewage disposal, that there is no change in water sewer capacity needed. Concerns there? Utilities that no utilities are proposed. Do want to point out in the application that they have either stuffed in or have the ability at some future date to add utilities. Kyle, quick comment on that. So I am assuming that addition of utilities at some later date, if they have prepped the pad to, to receive utilities, they will not have to come before us again. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. Minor changes to site plans can be made by the, approved by the code officer if it doesn't sort of drastically change what the planning board had approved. So that shouldn't, it shouldn't be needed unless there was some larger scale change that impacted one of the approvals that the planning board was giving.
Right. I don't want to waste this board's time with just a utility follow-up. So all right, any, any issues there? All right. Number 10, natural features that the structure will be replacing an existing structure and there will be little impact on natural features. Are there any issues? 11, groundwater and surface water quality protection that the proposed project does not adversely impact either the quality or quantity of groundwater available to abutting properties or to public water supply systems. Any concerns there? Moving on, number 12, hazardous special and radioactive materials that the use of the site does not involve the handling, storage or use of hazardous, special or radioactive materials. Concerns there? No. Number 13, shoreline relationship that this site is not within the shoreline zone. Okay with that? 14, solid waste management, that no changes to solid waste management are proposed. No problem there. 15, historic and archaeological resources that the site is not known to contain historic or archaeological resources. Concerns there? 16, financial capacity, that the applicant has the financial capacity to carry out the project. The concerns, lastly, number 17, noise and lighting. That the facility will operate within the noise and lighting standards in town ordinances. Any concerns with that one? Okay, hearing no, no concerns on that. I think we're ready for a motion. And again, please consider, maybe we can craft the language. I don't know, Judd, if you just want to take a crack at it, but we need to cover the two issues we discussed.
Yeah, can I read, can I read some proposed language for item two and three? So there's an existing.
Let's, let's do that before we get into it.
So for Krista's suggestion, the applicant's conditional building permit was only granted due to extenuating circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Is that adequate?
That seem reasonable? Kyle, is that suffice?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Judd.
And then the next one, David, this one was a little bit more difficult. I wrote that the applicant will work with the Orno tree board to replace the white birch tree that was removed for the structure. Is that hard enough? Is that fast enough? Or do we need something?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay. I mean, the applicant has acknowledged that. Just coordinate with Dave, come up with, you know, just a decent, decent compromise and we'll go from there. All right. Thank you, Judd. So I think we are ready for that, that motion.
All right, I move that we approve the after the fact site planner for an accessory storage, accessory structure, storage garage by RSU 26, located at 6 Goodridge, Goodridge Drive, tax map 027 triple 012 with the following three conditions. Number one, that the applicant will follow proper erosion control measures as outlined in the main erosion and sediment control best management practices. Number two, that the applicant's conditional building permit was only granted due to extenuating circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. And number three, the applicant will work with the Orno tree board to replace the white birch tree that was removed for the structure.
Thank you, Judd. Can I have a second on that?
A second.
Very good. Any further discussion? Jessica, back to you.
For approval of RSU's new storage garage, Krista Schwenser.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
I approve.
John Beckett.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approve.
Phil Rock.
Approve.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
That's 6-4.
Thank you, folks. All right, next up, other new business.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night. Other new business, Kyle, can you just give us just a heads up on anything coming down the pike? We do obviously have the bylaws, but similar to last time, I said I would prefer that we do not have a meeting just for that item. So Kyle, anything else on the horizon?
There are no applications in so far for January. I would say that with the holidays coming up and the days off, that something would have to be in by like the middle of next week, if it was going to be considered for January. And even then, that'd be pretty short and quick turnaround. So it would have to be something fairly small. So seems unlikely that there would be a January meeting.
Okay, I would like this board to have January off if possible. So. All right. Thank you, Kyle. Next up, discussion. Again, I'm going to second the comments by Dave. I, I don't like going out on that limb. I would prefer this board not be put in that position. But everyone's in a blue moon, so hopefully things will settle down and we won't have to make these, these kinds of decisions moving forward. Last up, we are adjourned. Can I get a motion, please? Wow, four of you simultaneously. Who got that one? Jessica, what do you think? Mike, you got it. So can we have a, a second, please?
Second.
Very good, Krista. You're up. Very good. Any further discussion? Again, Jessica, one last time.
For adjournment of the December meeting, Krista Schwenser.
Approve.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
John Beckett.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approved.
Phil Rock.
I approve as well.
Judd McIntosh. Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
That's six four.
Good. Hope you, you folks all have a great holiday. Thanks for showing up after we were teased by Kyle. I'm going to blame it on him, but. Yeah, we'll see you all in January. Have a great holiday.
Be well.
Yeah, except.
We'll see you in February, excuse me. Have a good night.